Jim and DC will help me out. I'll try to be as brief or as detail oriented as you want. Essentially, the purpose of tonight's presentation, if you flip the slide, is to talk to you in a little bit of detail about the Turnpike wastewater treatment facility and essentially overview some of the things that are going on there, the improvements that we need to make for expansion as well as enhancement, how much that's going to cost. And ultimately, we're going to recommend at this stage that we investigate the potential of a debt issue. We're not sure about the amount yet, but probably about the $15 million ballpark. So first, a little bit about the improvements that we're making. Because of city growth as well as our villages contract, we do our annual capacity projections, which is what this chart is, on a regular basis. And essentially, what this dotted green line represents is what we anticipate our flow to be. That's flow of wastewater into the treatment plant. This box represents a window of a five-year window. So you've got, on this side of the graph, you have amount of flow that we plan to treat, and we'll use this word a lot, GMD. MGD, maximum gallons per day, so that's what flows into the plant every day. And then down here, you have time in years. So this box represents about a five-year window in which when you reach 75% of your capacity, DEP says, hey, you guys got to start making plans to build onto your facility, enhance your facilities. So essentially, right now, our projection is, in a couple of years, we're going to hit, in about 2024, 3 MGD. So that's the outside of that timeframe window anyway. And so that keeps increasing, and then this is another projected flow line. So long story short, this chart says we have growth, we have solid waste water, and we need to make plans to improve our system. So what we'd like to do to improve our system, to meet that chart, is talk about it now. We'd like to get your approval to start a debt process and to investigate ways to borrow money to pay for facilities. We'd like to start looking into contractor, construction manager risk contract award. So we'd like to procure and start getting a contractor on board to make the improvements we're talking about. Then we'd like to get construction started. Boy, that's a little aggressive. I don't think we have those dates. But, and then ultimately, we want to get the project done by 2022. What, DC, are you going to add?
One of the advantages with Go and See and Risk, there are a couple of things that we can get done early in terms of filters and some of the other stuff. So there is a construction start that we're looking at in April. It'll help us expedite.
I don't want to say the villages is driving the train on this from taking the stormwater, but by and large, their 3 MGD that we took on is driving the train. So that's not a hidden secret. We knew that was coming. But that is a big catalyst. Ken, next slide. So here are all the things that we need to do to the plant. Change electrical around. We need to add another SBR. The SBR is the sequence or batch receptacle. It's the big bins that all the wastewater goes in. Different pumping, filters, chemical stations, biosolids, yard hauling off, engineering, construction, and contingency. So you see, we do have a pretty big contingency number in here. But long story short, we think all the improvements we need to make to the plant is about $22 million. In a picture... Hit the slide, Ken. Oh, I took that one out. I took the picture one out? I must have. So those are all the improvements. What we did now is we outlined, that was $22 million plus our reserve amount, that's unrestricted, $19 million, plus a couple of years of CIPs. And what we've done is we've projected some revenues, some expenses, some different capital projects. This one being the biggest one, the $22 million rehabilitation program. Then we've got other stuff in here, like routine capital. Adding a lift station, fixing a lift station, changing out main, whatnot, that type of thing. Venetian Isles project, $1.5 million, which is increasing the sewer interceptor so the property south of the hospital, the Venetian Isles project, can reach kind of potential there if they continue to move forward. Then we have recur. We have the 441 project in here to widen. So when the state comes through and widens it, that project's $6 million, but three of it's water, three of it's sewer, so the other $3 million is sitting in water. And then we also think that we're going to need a new Forest Main that comes up '27 to serve south side growth. So you put all these projects in the hopper, and at the end of 2024, we're actually about $6.6 million in the hole, should we pay as we go in this scheme? So Ken, hit the chart. So $19 million, put all those projects in. By '23, we're $6 million in the hole. That's not a good picture. So Ken, hit the next one. So basically, what we're thinking is, we need about $15 million bucks. We think we can get it pretty cheap, about 3% for 15 years. And we know that'll be an annual debt payment in the ballpark of about $1.2 million. So the question becomes, how do you pay for it? A portion of that chart goes back to revenue that we have coming in, which goes back to our wastewater agreement with the villages or SSUC. We'll talk about SSGC later tonight. But SSUC is under contract to provide us with 3 MGD. And the way they paid for that was a $9 million capacity reservation fee, which they pay incrementally in $3 million increments as we get $1 million, $1.5 million, and 2 MGD. When they hit those benchmarks for a sustained period, those three months or something, then they make the payment. So that's payment number one. That's already in the calculus. Payment number two is they pay a monthly sewer bill, just like everybody else, under the bulk treatment deal. That treatment deal is $2.85 per thousand plus $32. These numbers are now the estimates on an annual basis of what we think gallons per day average that they'll use in these months for the next 15 years. By the way, the chart stops at 2.44, which is 2.44 million gallons, which is what they say they'll stop at about 2027. That's an important number. It's a little bit under their reservation, but over the $9 million. So I think that the numbers then, on an annual basis that you generate from their debt, shows you that you do end up, when they're at their full capacity, you're sitting on that annual income of about $1.2 million. So at the end of the term of 15 years, your average would be about $757,000 of new income, which pays the debt. So that shows you, if we bring it in, they pay the debt. And then you still have about a million or so in reserve that then you can put... Remember, this is excess after the $1.2, so it's this plus this. That number minus that number leaves you that in remaining cash. So hit the chart. So what does that look like in a chart? So the first scenario described was this scenario. Below the $0, bad. So when you add debt and then you add in the incremental revenue, you have either A, revenue here in the future to pay for increased operation costs, which we think the error in the chart's probably going to cover that. And B, you also have some reserved cash. Then the debt starts to grow, the sewer fund again, which you can invest in other projects. So in a nutshell, the reason that we'd like to borrow is, one, it keeps us in a better cash management position, as the chart show. Two, because we're sitting on more cash, our bond ratings stay better. Three, right now, it's pretty cheap to borrow. And four, the next step in this phase is, if the city continues to grow, you know, there's about three areas of growth that we talk about and Dan brings to you on a regular basis. That's villages growth. Two, down South 27 corridor. And then you'll be seeing here recently, kind of what I call the Silver Lake growth, Out 44 and Radio Road corridor, up the north of the malls. So those kind of three areas are what's going to be pinching us. And if those things happen, you know, then we are at a compendium between, do we want to jump from 4.5 MGD improvement at Turnpike, which gets us our needs for the villages and a little bit of growth in our existing growth? But then, is there a thought that all these growth issues are actually going to push us to a need for 6.5 MGD? The good news in this plan is, on the reason to issue debt is, A, we'd like to issue a bank note because of its flexibility, easy to get, low interest rate. And then, B, the three-year to five-year window of construction, of growth, allows us then to determine whether we want to or have to go to that next step. And if we do make that next step, B, and we need to grow up to the 6.5 MGD, then we have option of renewing or refinancing the bank note into a bond note if we need to go to 6.5 MGD. And then we'll see if growth is real. Then we'll have impact fees, then we'll have other user fees that should justify another issue. So we might have an identified revenue source in the villages as well. So that's our...
Is this villages one, or does this include the second villages?
Let me jump ahead to answer that question. So when you say villages one, villages two, because that's a good way to say it. Ken, if you go to the desktop and pull up the gas presentation, there's a good map that breaks down the areas. And the answer is villages one. And if we're going to mix it, it's existing villages and new villages.
Right.
There's a... That's the Excel. There should be a PowerPoint on there, on the desktop. Brandy, would you stick to the gas presentation? I may have to take a break. Long story short, I'm going to have to slip out and send you the presentation so we have it for later. I sent Brandy the wrong thing. Box one of the villages is essentially 44 to 470, 301 to the Lake Hunter County line. In that box, we know that the villages is going to develop about 15,125 residential units. To the northwest of that box is what I'll call existing villages, which is Finney and the Bigums. There's also another one on the northwest side of Finney and the Bigums that's called Megason, which they'll build probably in a few years. So their basic movement is coming from Finney, Bigum, into the Carters, up the Bexleys, back to Megason and Leesburg. Although I think they slide Leesburg in there. I think they do Megason before they come to, I think, the Carters. That's how they're doing that, right? That's how the Tico talk was. So that's box one. Box two is basically everything below 470, South to 48, 301 to the county line. That box develops, that's 40,000-plus residential units. So we know that we'll get our 3 MGD because the 15,120 units is in the Carters and the Bexleys, not the Bigums and the Finneys and...
Starting with an M.
So that wastewater, we're already taking. So the villages, remember, this is why they got into this deal with us, is they had about three options for their sewer treatment. A, go with Wildwood. Wildwood, they didn't go with, in my opinion, for three reasons. One, location. Wildwood's plant is way west of Wildwood on 301. Their overall growth was coming east, closer to us. In fact, adjacent to our Turnpike plant. B, it was cheaper to pipe the infrastructure this way. And three, for them to get wastewater going the other way, they would have had to either, A, build an interceptor from kind of center of their growth and connect it to the Coleman sewer plant pipe, which is actually Wildwood. We serve Coleman gas. Wildwood serves Coleman wastewater. That pipe, however, is at capacity, so they didn't have an inexpensive way to get the water.
Okay.
So we became best of. So what we'd like to do is, we'd like to start kind of construction manager process, RFPs. We'd like to start some design stuff. And we'd like to investigate the issuance of debt. And all we're asking for this evening from you all is, you've kind of had the public debrief, and we're not going to do anything without coming back to you for your approval, but consensus of, okay, understand it, go ahead and move forward. And then what we'll do then is we'll bring you options on debt issues, what the cost, how much we need. And we'll get our financial involved advisors involved to help us pick the right options.
Figuring additional growth, and it's not just the villages, it's all these other communities coming in. Are you sure that 4 MGDs is enough?
The answer's no. But for now, I think what we have is, we have the bridge. We have about that three-year window.
Okay.
I'm hesitant to advise you to move forward and build now to 6.5 MGD.
What's the incremental cost?
About $40 million? Or was it $60? It's about $20 million per million gallons. So if we were expanding to six and a half, we'd probably be looking at running costs between $40 and $60 million.
Okay, it's a big deal.
Yeah.
So we didn't want to make that step. And to get from three to four and a half is $22 million. So we felt like this window with the bank note gives us some time to see the growth, pay for the growth, see what happens with the villages. Because it could be the time where, okay, we don't see that non-villages growth occur. And if that's the case, then I think there's some thinking that we need to do, whether we want to be in the sewer business on the south side, how much we'll expand, are we getting the growth? But if we are getting the growth, and if it is non-villages growth, yeah, I'm going to be back in front of you in about three years saying, we've got to go to 6.5. Frankly, I'm trying to push that decision off. I wouldn't advise you to make that commitment now.
I'm just thinking of it being less expensive to do it all now instead of wait three years. But I understand what you're saying. We don't want to over-expand.
And we just feel like making that jump right now is too big.
Okay.
At what point, dollar-wise, do you start looking at bonding it out? Because I would think you'd get like sub two to bond it.
The next phase. Jim, what's the answer on that? Like $20, $30 million longer term?
We have the flexibility to figure out the bond. We're at the bank note. We want as much as we can issue. First, we can repay it without a lot of hassle. So when we get to the point where we have to add another $20 million or so, then we'll go to the bond.
Okay.
Refinance the 15 along with the new money.
So then, instead of looking at the bank note at 15, you'll be looking at a bond for $20, $40 plus with that 15 refinanced in it?
My voice is still a little strained from two weeks ago. Help me understand the $9 million from the villages, the timing of that? So when I saw the revenue numbers...
This is in that presentation.
When I saw the revenue number paying the bond, it's blended in there, you're saying?
Yeah. Go one more. One more. It's in here. So what you see is, we calculated, this column is showing you gallons per day that they use for fiscal year '20, which is now. So we're experiencing about a 400,000 gallon increase that we think is associated, that we know is associated with the villages. Because we measured, we measured, and it's coming through their pipe. So you divide that out by a number of houses that we know they grew from the gas side. We know they're doing pretty much spot on their 100 gallons a day usage.
Okay, so you just answered another question. I was wondering how you develop the particulate percentage when the village isn't even built yet. But these are the villages in Finney and...
Yep, yep, yep. And some of the villages in Bigum are lived in now. So you've got Finney, Bigum, and those villages that we're now serving. And we know they're doing about 100 gallons a day. So if they continue at that pace, which is about 250 units a day that's growing, these are going to be your flow rates, which matches what they're saying. So the payments come at, there was a payment of $3 million... $9 million was their capacity number, getting back to your question, Commissioner. $9 million was their capacity payment. Roughly, the way the agreement worked is, they owed us, I think it was $250,000 to start. That was to-go money. So of the $9 million, they've already paid us $250. When they hit the first MGD, one MGD, for 90 days, which we estimate to be sometime in 2022, then they got to pay us another $3 million bucks.
That's not in those numbers.
No, because this is the user fee number, not in the... That's it. That $3 million is in the other chart.
That's what I'm trying to understand, this chart right here.
Yeah. You've got January 21. January 21, you've got July 22, and July, or December 33, which should correspond with the other chart.
So, but then, back to that, this chart, because we're going to get down to the negative $7 million, but this doesn't have any profit from user fees and revenue numbers.
No, this is just cash.
Well, but isn't the profit from the user fees? I mean, we have a surplus on your chart of $750,000 a year on average.
That's not in this chart. This chart is cash and revenue from capacity payment.
Right, but isn't the excess revenue from user fees going to go into cash? So that number is not going to be a negative $6 million?
Yeah, it is, because you're going to spend $22 million.
But you got all the... Don't you have that in those?
No, these are other projects.
Those are other projects? Okay, you don't have any of the 22 in that?
Right.
So you have two different charts that you're blending together?
I am. So this chart's showing we're spending $22 million on the sewer plant and the other various projects we have, like Venetian Isles, the various capital projects, the US 27 and 441. So if you put all those projects plus the villages' expansion project with your cash and the capacity payment, you're in a whole $22 million. So if you offset that with borrowing and get the $15 million so you don't spend all of your cash, you pay your note with the other revenue that we projected.
And I guess where I was going with my question was, if we're building this, I know it's not entirely for the villages, but if we're building this for them, why is the $9 million not being put up sooner?
Because we negotiated, because that's what we negotiated.
I see why I asked that question.
Well, the capacity agreement was an integrated tiered step.
And I think, to be... Well, and frankly, we significantly underestimated the cost of this plant.
We thought, and, yes. A, we thought it was going to be about $12 to $15 million improvements, and now it's about $22. I think there's a couple of different variants that go in there where we missed it. Number one is, we didn't understand how poorly the plant was performing when we made the deal. And the capacity payment was scheduled so that it would give us incremental time to make improvements, and they wouldn't have been burdened with a $9 million payment at once. So at the time, we thought it was a reasonable deal. It turns out that I think it still is. It balances. I don't think it's an impact to the existing users. The villages is paying for their growth. We're still making a surplus of a little over a million a year, even after the debt. So, you know, after you get into a project and you see it, and then experience and miss some issues, and then come back to it, it's about right where we started.
There's a question brewing there.
And I don't need to be trite in this answer, but it's like, if we don't want to do any other projects, we can float it. But that's not a good answer. Because there are several big wastewater projects that are coming up that we need to do.
So what you're looking for tonight is the approval to go ahead and start looking into this further?
Yep, and everything will be before you. This is not a, let's do this. This is a, understand you're out looking. And next time I see you, I'll probably be back saying, hey. I'll be back with the credit card.
Would you like that approval now?
Yeah, you don't need to do that, but just a consensus is good.
We don't have many choices, right? Bring some back. Yeah, bring some options.
Okay. Commissioner Peterson, yes, no?
I'm good.
This is just to get more options.
Yes, I'm fine.
I'm not signing away your...
I talked to All Day. All these projections make me nervous. I wish the villages' money would come a little sooner, but I'm fine. I'm fine.
Commissioner Robb? Okay?
Yep.
Okay. That was our presentation for the night. And Brandy, thank you for turning that heat down. It was getting a tad warm in here.
I don't think it's working.
Yeah, okay. This section is for public comments. Members of the public can bring up matters of concern or opportunities for praise. Issues brought up will not be discussed in detail at this meeting. Issues will either be referred to the proper staff or will be scheduled for consideration at a future city commission meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes. Is there anybody who would like to speak tonight? Yes, please come up to the podium, and we'll need your name.
Timothy Lynn and my wife Karen Lynn. We have 10 properties, nine of them rental properties, four of them in Leesburg. We've never ran into this before. We've gotten code enforcement violations for our renters not mowing their places, having an abandoned car, trashy, and stuff like that, which we totally understand. Sometimes it's hard to get them to do it, though. So we received a letter that was sent January 21 about our property 102 Harold Street. All of a sudden, they're saying, we're failing to maintain the right-of-way between West Main Street and our property on Harold Street. Now, we've owned this property 35 years. Never heard of this before. Back, I talked to Mr. Riley Snively, I think. And he had taken, and he told me that, oh, this was passed way long ago, and they redid it in 2002. I said, well, for 17 years before 2002, we'd never heard of it. For 18 years after, I said, what's changed now? I don't think what the city understands, you're sending either owners or non-professionals to do work mandated by the city because we were told by... by Donnie, which is Lake County Supervisor at the City of Leesburg. He said it was mandated that the county has the asphalt and the city has the easement. Now, I realize y'all have some meeting late at night outside of the sunshine, and you say, oh, let's pass this on to the people so we don't have to do our work, which you've done...
I think you're mistaken there, sir.
Which you've done for 35 years. So, well, I don't think I'm mistaken.
I think you are.
One thing, of course, they send a nasty letter. Give you seven days, threaten you with $250 a day fines. I guess what they don't understand, we live in Okeahunka. We live on a dirt road. We get our mail down at the end of a ditch by Highway 470. We're lucky, if we leave the house, we pick up our mail Wednesday and Saturday because usually all we get is bills. So anyway, I called him late and talked to him. Sent a letter, and Mr. Snively sent me 10 pages of code violations in the last six months, plus the 240 violations for the same violation. Now, a lot of these streets, I don't know of. But the thing that I don't like, I've got pitchers... got pictures around us there, I'll need these back if I need to get an attorney, but I don't know if you want to look at these, but I've got 12 pictures of 11 properties around us that did not get a letter to do this. The only ones I can see that got a letter to do this is myself and the guy on the west side of Harold Street. Now, he's got a guy, he already got scared and cleaned his up. I tried, tried getting these people to all come, but I have no idea how to get ahold of them, then I found out, they didn't get the notices anyway, so why are they going to come? Did anybody want to see these, or did I do them for nothing?
No, you didn't do them for nothing, but have you gone before the code enforcement? There is an actual legisla, uh, actual, I'm going to say judge, that takes care of this, and they meet once a month and come up with all these things. So it's not any secret that we're cracking down on code enforcement.
I'm doing what Riley Snively told me to do, which is come here, and then, I guess next Monday, I go before the magistrate.
There you go.
Now, the magistrate, I've gone before, I was promised the first time I went before, I was right then, yet the magistrate expected me to cut somebody's lock. I tried mowing the backyard, the renters wouldn't do it, they wouldn't remove the lock to let me in there. I know the law good enough that if I cut their lock, I could be charged for breaking and entering, because it's like they own the place. But the magistrate said, well, you should have cut the lock and mowed it. And I said, well, I don't have one of these $60, $70 worth of big bolt cutters to do that for one thing, and I said, for another thing, I didn't want to go to jail. Of course, I was still fine.
You are the owner, though, correct?
Excuse me?
You are the owner of that property?
Yes, ma'am.
You have a responsibility, then, so I think you really need to talk to magistrate Schultz next Monday night.
Well, yeah, and if that doesn't work, I'm, I'm ready to take this to a jury trial, because I don't see how after 35 years, I'm making all of a sudden, decide to implement something that hasn't been in effect for 35 years. And then, when you do implement it, you pick and choose, the people, out of 12 people near me, only two of us got this notice.
I can understand that, but you've got to talk to the magistrate.
Yeah, the difference is, the, our property, both his and mine, it goes off the road and doesn't be flat, or like most of them have a little ditch, it goes, then it goes uphill when they took the road through, they cut through there, so the hill thing. And our place isn't even as grown up as, as the other 10 places were.
Makes it no better.
All right, I'll take it to them, then.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else? No other public comments. Okay, we will move ahead to the consent agenda. Routine items are placed on the consent agenda to expedite the meeting. If the commissioner's staff wish to discuss any item, the procedure is as follows. One, pull the item from the consent agenda, and two, vote on remaining items with one roll call vote, and discuss each pulled item and vote by roll call. First off, let me make an announcement on public hearings and run routine, we are pulling 6A and B. Okay, so we will not discuss that tonight. Are there anything, any items you wish to pull?
I have 5B1.
5B1.
B3, B6, and B9.
Commissioner Christian?
I'm nothing tonight.
Okay.
I'm fine, I was going to pull B9, Dan Holder.
Oh, okay, thank you. Could I have a motion to pass all remaining items?
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Commissioner Christian?
Yes.
Mayor Dennison?
Yes. Okay, 5B1. Somebody introduce, please.
I'll introduce, ask to be read by title only.
Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Leesburg, Florida, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a construction services agreement with Emmett Sap Builders, Inc., to furnish and construct two aircraft storage hangars for an amount not to exceed $1,595,000 and providing an effective date.
Move for approval, please.
Second.
I need to stand there, customer.
Okay. Okay, is that the only reason you pulled this?
That's the only reason.
Okay. Any other discussion? Absolutely.
I had one question.
Uh huh.
And I, I thought this was later in the agenda, I apologize. Um, I spoke with Al about this, um, the issue of sprinklers, sprinklers in this hanger.
I did not follow up on that conversation after that. Sprinklers are part of the design, I believe they're in the building now. It's going to come down to a local issue with the building official. So if we can, and it sounds, be straight, it, we'll have to beat her up to get her to do a different interpretation. I'll fight that fight with her.
Okay. You know, it's my, it's my understanding-
Excuse me.
Yeah, you're fine.
I know that, excuse me, know that other cities and other airports have, you know, that I've gotten this argument through my office a number of times, that they didn't do it in Kissimmee, they didn't do it in Jacksonville, why are we doing it here? Some of those are size things, some of those are a little bit different, some of it's apples to oranges, but the bottom line is, to sprinkler or not to sprinkle will be a local determination made by the building official.
Okay, and I was just going off some of the airport advisory board members saying it's not customary at other airports, and it is adding to our cost of construction and cost of maintenance, you know, thereafter, so.
Don't disagree.
Okay, so I, I missed that one, it was like Dan Holder.
So my other question, Al, maybe Trace can do it, maybe something we can do, I know we're building these, we're only paying 300,000 city costs, is there any we can put up a performer in these future, how much rent the T-hanger is going to bring, when we'll see that 319 return?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll get that to you next meeting, um, we're going to be recommending, during the budget discussion, y'all talked about increasing rental rates, so we did some research on that, I'll have that to you next week. My hope then is, after that, we'll increase some rent rates, I think these were-
They already increased them out of the airport, existing, yeah, the advisory board did. It doesn't have to come to us.
Now, that's under my authority to do, the way you have that done, but I want to, I'll come back and get you updated.
And I'd like to see, when we're doing this, voting on it, so the public say, we're spending 319,000 city dollars, um, year number five, we'll start seeing a profit, um, if we lease it out, so it's just some kind of business performer attached to what we're doing, this type of thing.
I'll get it for you.
Okay.
And they did raise the rates, I saw it in the minutes, the airport advisory board.
I'd like to raise a question about sprinkler system. I know that, that I keep getting told Florida doesn't require it, but to me, it's a major safety issue. We saw Mo Moore's house burned down, there was no sprinkler system, and even when I said, please put one in there, there's been an argument about that. Can we pass something, and I know we just had a code enforcement comment, but can we pass something to regulate the sprinkler systems in Leesburg? It's not a matter that other people are not doing it, this is a safety issue, maybe we should do it.
It's not a safety issue, it's a value issue. I mean, nobody got hurt in Mo Moore's house, that would be a safety issue. I mean, you're talking about significantly increasing the cost of business for, for people by going above the Florida Building Code, I'm 100% against doing more than what the Florida Building Code requires or the Florida Fire Code.
I've been bending out here on, you know, loosening up on the second floor downtown, you know, with, you know, second form of egress and getting away from sprinklers, so we could redevelop upstairs. That's, that's the hindrance right now to redeveloping a lot of buildings downtown on the second floor. And, you know, in other cities, if they have two forms of egress, it works, so I don't understand why we have to have sprinklers upstairs.
I'll go down screaming about sprinkler systems, I think it's a major issue.
Let me add a comment at the airport, when I was, I'm not a pilot, I'm, I'm learning a lot about the airport, but they're saying, you know, a sprinkler system doesn't do any good with a fire, a gas fire, a fuel fire. So, you know, why are we sprinkling, you know, when you're-
Isn't there foam that can come out of those sprinklers?
I can't speak to that.
There's foam come out of that truck we got sitting right there that we don't use.
But I believe, I believe, I believe your sprinkler system's water, that's, that's what I've been told.
So, so-
Why are we putting water irrigation in a situation where the fire will likely be a fuel fire?
This is our yard.
Here we go, here's the man.
Speaking of fire sprinkler systems, we looked at doing foam, but the chemical that comes out of the foam is toxic to the aircraft, like, causes corrosion and causes more damage than the water will.
Okay.
So a lot of places won't use foam, we, we definitely wouldn't.
May I ask your opinion on sprinklers in the hangars? Is that a fair question?
If the building code doesn't require, I would say no. And, um, we have a building that was below the limit, we're looking to add to the building, when we have to bring it up to code, of course, but any new construction, we would be against it if it doesn't meet, if it's below the threshold.
So Commissioner Peterson, your, your question is, you don't think we should have sprinklers added to this contract?
That's, that's what I'm saying, I think it's increasing your cost, it's not, I'm being told it's not needed.
Do we have a number, Al, for what it-
Hundred grand.
Hundred grand?
Ninety.
Ninety. And so the decision is the building, the building official has to make that call whether it's needed or not needed?
Yeah, I mean, this goes to all the points that you guys, you guys have tonight, so Mayor Dennison is saying, got to have sprinkler systems, we should pass a local regulation that insists on it, that quasi, we already have that through the Florida Building Code that we adopt, and the Florida Building Code then promulgates the levels of when you need sprinkler systems. Single-family houses don't, multifamily does, Mo Moore's house just fell into a totally different category with how we did that. And then, there's so, there's, there's a varying of building official opinions on how to apply this to your airport.
Churches have a 300.
So you're gonna, so-
Something keeping under 200, 300.
You know, so I respect where the airport board is and what people at the airport say, um, yeah, I'd love to save 90 grand of that, 80% is ours, so, what's the number on that, about?
Seventy two.
Twenty, 7200 bucks?
Thousand?
No, ninety, we're saying eight, we're 20% of that number is ours. So, you know, 15 grand-ish, so, you know, it, this one's Ann. And, and if you've ever dealt and managed with building officials, they'll remind you of their license, they'll remind you of their autonomy to interpret the code.
We've heard that before too, so.
And, you know, I don't know the professional, you know, you guys know I'm not hesitant to give my opinion.
I didn't mean to make that big of a deal about it, I was told that most of the airports do not require, that's why I brought it up.
Well, maybe someday Florida will come in the 21st century. That's all I have to say about that. I'll be long gone before that happens. Okay, thank you for that discussion, I think we need a vote on that issue.
Commissioner Christian?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Robach abstain, Mayor Dennison?
Yes. Okay, item B3.
I'll introduce, ask to be read by title only.
Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Leesburg, Florida, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an amendment to an existing task order with GAI consultants to provide construction phase services for oversight of the construction of hangars at the Leesburg International Airport for an amount of $67,180 and providing an effective date.
Move for approval? Second.
Discussion?
My question was that, why did we need a contract administrator?
And this is an FDOT issue, they, we got the 80-20 grant, so they're coughing up 80% of the funds, they have a requirement that we manage the process step by step, and essentially-
We can do that internally?
No, we, after our conversation, I looked into it, and the answer is no, we've got some grant issues and some other things lined up that FDOT is requiring that we do.
This is crazy, they're giving us money and forcing us to spend an extra $67,000.
This isn't unlike the battle that we had on Dixie as well, you know, we, remember we had that fight with, I think our construction services on Dixie was like 170 grand, we delayed it, what, do you see that took us like, three months, delay trying to get that number, just to 80?
Yes, you do.
No water sprinklers.
Okay.
Yeah, don't get me going, yeah, water, sprinklers in a metal building.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Commissioner Christian?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Dennison?
Yes. 5B6.
I'll introduce, ask to be read, and move for approval? Second. Uh, this was on the concrete one, and I guess, and, and, and Mike did send me all the information in the bid detail with last year as well, and the only reason I'm pulling it, I'm in favor of it, it was just, it was so much lower, I think it was like 46% lower than the second bid, which just makes me a bit nervous, but Mike did provide the references, which were good. I would just ask that staff on the first couple of projects really make sure, maybe price out the ready mix, because that's not included, and make sure that they're not, you know, significantly inflating that to try to make, make it up, and then, you know, if they are, we can deal with it at that time, but.
My part, Percy Manager, well, when they invoice us, they have to give us the, whoever they use for the ready mix, the cost of the ready mix, and then they'll get the 20% markup on that.
Okay.
And the reason we do it that way is because in the past, that commodity has been problematic, where we're asking them to give us a three-year firm price. And if we ask them to do that on a ready mix, they're going to really pad it, because it's going to go up.
Right.
So, we feel this gives us a more accurate cost by pricing it per job, instead of asking them for a firm price.
Well, I'm happy they're allowing it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Commissioner Christian?
Yes.
Mayor Dennison?
Yes. 5B9. Somebody like to introduce, please?
I'll introduce, ask to be read by title only.
Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Leesburg, Florida, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an amendment to an existing professional services agreement with CPH, Inc., for the aquatic complex for an additional $41,381 and providing an effective date.
Motion for approval?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I, I pulled this one, because it indicates that, you know, we're spending more money because a specific site wasn't known, but a specific site wasn't known, and we put out the RFP, so, why are we giving them more money?
You, Mr. Ballis?
We, we, at the time that we put out the RFP, we didn't know what site we were going to be at, we didn't know if it was going to be at the gym or wherever, so we didn't include this site investigation in that original scope of work.
Well, this is the, this is the, um, geo and the-
This is soil borings.
I, I told you wrong, Dan.
Okay, never mind.
This is not that, this is geo, soil boring, this is not incre-
I got from Al, it's like, well, they had to do more drawings, because I changed up the concept, like, well, hold on.
We did, I anticipate that coming.
Well, I'm going to vote you on that one, so you can tell them I didn't talk about it.
I did, we did go around, but this is-
Yes, I understand why they need this stuff.
This is geotech survey, and that was not in the, in the contract.
Show your hand, okay, there.
Next time, come here. No, I advised Dan incorrectly on that one, that one's on the-
Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Commissioner Christian?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Dennison?
Yes. Okay, public hearings and non-routine items. 6A and B are off the schedule. 6C, would somebody like to introduce, please?
I'll introduce and recommend it read by title only.
An ordinance of the City of Leesburg, Florida, vacating approximately 1,270 square-foot section of easement consisting of an area approximately 10 feet wide by 127 feet long. Said property generally located on Lot 16, Live Oak Ridge, as recorded in Plat Book 13, page 24, of the public records of Lake County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Move for approval? Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Commissioner Christian?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Mayor Dennison?
Yes. 6D. Somebody like to introduce, please?
I'll introduce, ask to be read by title only.
An ordinance of the City of Leesburg, Florida, correcting a Scrivener's error by amending the language in Section 1 of Ordinance 19-38, from allow industrial uses to allow residential uses, which said ordinance did rezone certain real property consisting of approximately 51.97 plus minus acres, from PUD planned unit development to PUD planned unit development, for property generally located east of US Highway 27 and south of County Road 48, as legally described in Sections 13 and 14, Township 20 South, Range 24 East, Lake County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
This is the first reading, is there any discussion on this? Is there any discussion on this? We will have the second reading, I would imagine, on the second meeting in February date. Six E. Somebody like to introduce, please?
Introduce, ask to be read by title only.
An ordinance of the City of Leesburg, Florida, amending the zoning on approximately eighteen point eight seven plus minus acres to allow for fifty single-family residential lots in a PUD planned unit development, zoning for a property generally located east of US Highway four forty-one and south of Park Holland Road as legally described in section fourteen, township nineteen south, range twenty-four east, Lake County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
This is the first reading. Is there any discussion on this? Okay. F, six F. Would somebody introduce, please?
Introduce, ask to be read by title only.
An ordinance of the City of Leesburg, Florida, amending and restating ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash two as amended by two thousand eighteen dash five, providing a short title, providing findings and intent, granting certain non-exclusive franchises to Tri-County Sanitation LLC, South Sumter Utility Company LLC, and Southeast Wildwood Water Conservation Authority LLC. There's assessors and assigns parentheses each a franchise and sometimes collectively referred to herein as the franchises in parentheses. A franchise for a period of thirty years to construct, own, operate, and maintain certain services and facilities to serve areas within the adjacent, within and adjacent to the villages' age-restricted development, setting forth the terms and conditions under which such franchises shall operate, providing for conflict and severability, and providing an effective date.
This is the first reading. Is there any discussion on my side? Thank you. Six G. Would somebody introduce, please?
Introduce and recommend read by title only.
Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Leesburg, Florida, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a settlement and territorial agreement between the City of Leesburg, the Villages Land Company LLC, South Sumter Gas Utility LLC, and Peoples Gas System, and providing an effective date.
Someone like to put a motion for approval?
Move for approval? Second.
Discussion, please? Did you want to say anything?
Well, I can be, I can be as quiet or as detailed as you want. Being that we spent a little bit of time on this, we maybe should talk about it.
Okay.
I did, so I did put together a quick presentation. And in summary, we made some assumptions and, you know, on the revenue side. So what does this partnership and agreement and settlement agreement, items G and H, kind of go hand in hand. So I'm gonna speak to them together. So what is the South Sumter Gas Company, which is the villages' partnership? What's the summary? What did we accomplish? So based on a number of assumptions, we did a low growth scenario. We did, we're experiencing two hundred and fifty residential units a month. That's kind of where we talked on the sewer and the water stuff. So as these kind of things coincided, they actually lined up with uses, which made us feel better about our projections because we're seeing some of this. The assumptions don't include commercial growth, which I think makes this extremely conservative numbers because based on villages' growth patterns and other factors, there probably is gonna be some residential growth in here and some good residential growth. That'll be good gas customers. So we totally ignore that. When we started out on this road, we used, as did PGS, Peoples and Tico or Sonoma's. We did a two hundred terms a year. And so we tightened that number up to be even more strict, get it closer even to what we're seeing. And so we went on a thirteen terms per month, which is a twenty percent reduction from our initial start at this. So, long story short, what do we see? I know this is a huge range, but we see a range, I think, when you compare to your native surplus. So the native surplus is how much money does Jack and the gas fund put back in our pocket that we then go spend on different projects? And that's about seven hundred and fifty thousand a year. Okay, so that's, that's the bar. That's what we're comparing to. So when I say an annual return on investment, I'm comparing it to how much more of that surplus you have. And the number's nine to twenty percent annually. So it's a big number. And based on two scenarios, which I'll get into in a second. The settlement agreement only leaves us one stranded cost, which is our earth system, which will be repaid for. We maintain and assume the forty-four and the five oh one high-pressure lines. This is important because now we can shift about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars back into our reserve accounts because we're gonna build a line up, the four seventy property. And also, this is significant because I don't see, foresee any need for high-pressure main investments, probably for the very near future. And if I'm back to you saying we need main investments, then our projections are way wrong, and they're way wrong, too conservative, because then growth would be in box one and box two. And I'll show you that in a second. So if I'm back saying we need more main, that's actually gonna be a good thing. Coleman Prison remains the city's. Okay, so let's talk about investment. Our total investment is about one point eight million. That's calculated for the investment on the four oh one line. Go back, Ken. The four oh one line, the five oh one line, returning money for no need for the Leesburg four seventy property line and our investment into Moyles Law Firm. To date, that actual number is five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars. Five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars. And we were programmed to go up to about six eighty. If you approve the settlement agreement, that train should stop pretty quick. John's probably got a couple of pennies still on his meter. I don't anticipate, I'd estimate somewhere around six hundred. So that's what that investment took. So down to the next one then, risk. I really foresee the biggest risk to this agreement being twofold. One, the villages doesn't grow. I don't think that that's a very big risk. And two, an outside challenge that we would get that tries to attack the agreement again. The whole fight essentially boiled down to, from the PSC to DOA, in a nutshell, it boiled down to the agreement. We didn't fight about territory. We, because when it came to ironing out who was what, that fight unfolded pretty easily. And I think the map that I'm gonna show you is if we didn't do, we essentially got a five-yard penalty for, as Jack says eloquently, for starting out a little bit quicker than we should have and getting into the big ones before we didn't. If had but for us doing that, I don't think the villages would have ever developed gas and there wouldn't be gas service. So I think this is one of those settlements where it's not great, but it's what we expected and it's pretty reasonable. And it still leaves us with a lot of upside. So if there is an issue, it's who is gonna challenge the agreement? And that's getting, I went full circle there on a bunch of other issues that got talked about, but the main one was Tico significantly fought us tooth and nail that our agreement between the city and SSGC was unconstitutional. And bottom line was, we have finding a fact from an administrative law judge that says our agreement is legal. And now, when the ruling from the Public Service Commission comes out, you're gonna have an order from the Public Service Commission that stipulates that our agreement is legal. So why is that important? Because if it's challenged, it would be legislatively changed. And I think now, we've got a finding a fact from an administrative law judge. You've got the Public Service Commission. And I think you're gonna have the power of the villages as well as now FMBA is our friend again and FMAA working with us if this would be challenged because then other cities would be affected. Who would wanna do the same type of deal we have? So we'll have Bill working with us now. So we're friends with Bill, which is a happy day for the city. So those four factors are huge in whether the legislature would change this. So that's, that's the outside factor. Will the legislature ever change the law to stop this? Who would prod the legislature to do that? I'll name three entities. PGS. They've agreed in the settlement agreement not to. Two, Duke. Duke kind of went, had a history with the villages where the villages' management wasn't real happy with Duke. And they have had their kumbaya meeting. They're at the term of a territorial agreement. Duke got the territory that they were about to lose because of the expiration of the territory, facilitated by the villages. And when FPL, the other potential challenger to this, started challenging this, Duke didn't play, which tells me that Duke was listening to the villages, which is good for us. So I think at the end of the day, probably FPL would be the initial challenger. FPL's got issues of their own right now. I know if you go to FMPA and FGU and FMEA, that we're always worried about the outside challenge. I think in this case, that is the biggest exposure. Don't feel overly adamant that we're gonna see something, but I'm not gonna sit here and tell you we won't either. But it's totally worth the risk. Why? Next chart. In a picture, everything I just said breaks down to this. This is your, this is your area. This is this area. I'll do it both for the audience. This is the area up here we call Bigum and other areas awarded to PGS. So we only topped in all of this area. This triangle basically was the box that we were already serving. It has three thousand, six hundred twenty-five customers that now shift to PGS that we were serving. So that moves. Then we came in and box, villages' box one is this box, which is basically forty-four up here, actually it's up here, so we come down now, is a mid, between, a midpoint between forty-four and four seventy, kind of straight over to the prison and down. This box and the property that we sold them, that's box one. That is the Carter's, Villages of West Lake, Villages Pride, Commercial Development maybe, but I don't know that for sure. And this is what we refer to roughly as the Bexley Property. So in this box, we, as it would be built out, fifteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-five customers. Box number two, which also becomes our territory, is this big box, four seventy, south to forty-eight, the county line to three oh one, it's actually four seventy-one. And then denim village, which we did the annexation stuff on the other night. This box, forty thousand customers. So now put the pictures and the settlement into a spreadsheet. And I did two scenarios. This scenario is two hundred and fifty terms of gas a month, every month, for ten years, when you level out at two hundred, when you level out at fifteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-five customers. After three years, you're still in the hole, about nine hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. But the general fund's gotten a hundred and seven thousand. So that was our, this is our investment. And then two twenty-five, two point two million, that's your native surplus, which represents seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So seven hundred and fifty times three is two point two million. So keep the same assumptions, run it out to year five. In the middle of year five, you see your return. And by the end of year five, so you see how much you made up in that two-year period. You see those numbers are working now for you. Initial investment, six hundred and forty thousand dollars is your return. General fund's now seeing three sixty-four. So really, you should add these two numbers together and you're, you know, add these two numbers together and you're even quicker in the hole. And so now, your five-year return is three hundred and sixty-four thousand. The big number is after ten years. Now, mind you, at ten years, just like the sewer, it stops at fifteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-four units. So this number stops at fifteen twenty-four in year seven. And you make about one point three million dollars a year in surplus. That number would go on forever, just at that level of customer with the assumptions. And this number is ninety-one percent of this number, or you know, a growth of about, divide that, nine, nine percent a year. So that's that number. No commercial, same assumptions. So I don't think it's gonna be this bleak. I think growth, we're gonna see growth get down to four seventy. But I also don't wanna be as optimistic as saying forty thousand customers. But then again, you never know. So let's just look at that picture. So over here, the three-year summary is the same assumptions. It's the same. The five-year summary, it starts to change, no, wait, no, 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 the five-year summary should be about the same. Five-year summary. The ten years, you know, the five-year summary is different because we stopped on customers. And then by the ten-year summary, you're looking at eight point eight million. Because now I didn't stop it at one hundred, because remember there, we, this is eight years. So here, we stopped at five fat, one fat, fifteen hundred and twenty-five customers. This is eight years, so that's where you generated that extra million bucks. So then the ten-year summary, long story short, is if you grow, and I think I went up, this is the same amount. This is, I can't remember how many customers, I have to look at the chart. But you're looking, this is eight point eight million over that ten years is your return. So divide that by your number of years and divide it by that, and that's where you're looking at more of a return. And then here's your twenty percent return. If you go up to fifteen years and you continue to grow at the two hundred and fifty customers, which is their pace, you're looking at a total return of twenty-three million, which is, you know, over double of your surplus. So, long story short, you know, this is probably one of the most exciting things I think I've worked on. If it comes to fruition, I, this is probably, I think, one of the neatest deals that I've ever been involved with. Jack has been a tremendous help and resource, counting money and doing infrastructure and working as guys. Of course, we're very litigious too. John Moyles' help was extremely important. Fred played a lot of parts in this too, bouncing off legal ideas and working the original agreement. So this has been a huge issue. I think it has a teeny little bit of risk, but I do feel very comfortable that at a minimum, you're gonna see at least fifteen thousand customer growth, which puts us in a nine percent range. And frankly, Leesburg's never seen that. So obviously, I recommend that you approve the settlement agreement.
So with the history of the villages, we can pretty much count on commercial buildings going out there?
I think you can. I think you're gonna see commercial.
City centers.
Villages, Villages Pride, maybe, if something's going on in there, that might be a big customer. City centers, pools, different restaurants, that kind of thing. I think the villages definitely has repeated kind of their pattern as they get their demographics and they get the numbers of people that support this. And you kind of like how Publix does life. So I think you can, you're gonna see commercial, but I didn't put it in the number just...
Right, well, that's just gonna be an add-on to that twenty-three million dollars.
I hope so.
Okay, are there any more questions from the commission?
No, this one doesn't scare me as much as a sewage plant. Only from a city's advancement.
Look, you know, at the end of the day, I think when you walk away from this is, we, and a lot of credit goes to Jack on this. Not that DTC doesn't run a good sewer plant. That's very good as a correct smile, but. Gas, the gas business, I think just frankly, is extremely profitable. That's why we saw such a fight out of it from PGS. And that's why we saw FPL dip, sticking their nose into the fight. And that's why the villages got attracted to it as well. And on top of that, our rate is extremely competitive. There you go. And that's why that picture looks good. And it's publicly owned and managed by you all. And it's a little bit different than the sewer system. And, you know, one point eight million to try to get twenty-three sounds a lot better than twenty-two to get one. But that's how, that's how that picture is.
Okay, any comments from the public? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
No, 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 it's strictly on this issue.
Well, it's about the village.
About the gas.
The gas.
Oh, no.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Commissioner Christian?
Yes.
Mayor Dennison?
Yes.
Okay, would somebody like to introduce H?
Introduce, ask to be read by title only.
Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Leesburg, Florida, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the First Amendment to natural gas system construction, purchase and sale agreement with SSGC and providing an effective date.
Move for approval? Second.
Discussion?
I did, I'll be even briefer. These things go together, but before you amend the agreement, just, this is, this is an amendment that now amends the SSGC city agreement that we just spent fifteen minutes talking about. This amendment does three things. Not all of them are real big, but one of them is the doomsday issue. And so if, you know, I just spent twenty minutes saying, oh, doomsday will never happen. But of course, lawyers wanna talk about doomsday, as we should. So the first thing this does is it puts a new map, a new territorial map, which is the... is the Area 123 map that I showed you just moments ago. But previously, what our agreement did was it was a rolling agreement, and as the villages grew, we were going to amend the map. Now that we have this recognized territory with a settlement agreement that's going to be filed with the Public Service Commission, we changed the map in our agreement. So now our agreement is more static. It's fixed into that box. So we won't have to go back and forth amending the map. That's not a big issue. The second issue that we do is the map, the settlement, the agreement, the agreement, rather, stated that if we were challenged and our lines became, our high-pressure systems became unusable or a stranded asset, then we would get repaid by the villages for that. Because the settlement agreement now states that we will still continue to use our high-pressure lines, there's no need for that statement in the agreement, and we struck it. And as we build further, we'll be building to a territory that's ours, and that risk is no longer there. The third issue is the doomsday issue, and that is essentially if everything blows up and the agreement's found illegal, we get the right to negotiate with villages a different deal. If that doesn't happen, then we split, to a degree, the system. And those customers that are in Sumter County are returned back to the villages. Those customers that would be in Leesburg will provide the city the opportunity to negotiate a purchase price for the low-pressure lines, which the villages puts in. And if we can't come up with that reasonable negotiation, then we automatically get our 6% franchise, which is the typical in-restaurant utility franchise. It's the municipal standard. My hope is that we don't get to doomsday. And if we did get to doomsday, we would come up with a reasonable number and a way to purchase the Lake County system. And beyond that, I think the city will hold some pretty good negotiation clauses because of the interconnection. Obviously, it's easy to disconnect, but the hard parts in this would be is you do have to purchase gas. You have to wholesale it. Who's going to be your provider? You do have to have some transmission lines, and you do have to be tapped into a transmission line. And we hold the cards there with our purchasing through FGU, with our Sable Trail Tap, and with some of our high-pressure mains that will be feeding the system. So even in doomsday, we still have some tentacles that'll be wired together that will help us in the negotiation, I think, if we would have to split the system in the doomsday scenario. So those are the three amendments to the agreement. Hopefully, you make this, assuming you approve this. Our next step is to take a territorial agreement up to the Public Service Commission and have it filed. That probably needs a stop here, because you probably have to do a resolution of transmittal, which I'll throw on consent agenda, because it will basically be that map barring anything crazy's in there. And then the Public Service Commission signs off on it. This issue's put to bed, and then hopefully, we sell gas.
Excellent. Any other comments?
No.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Commissioner Christian?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Dennison?
Yes.
Informational reports, first, is financial reports as of December 2019. Are there any updates on that? Nope? Okay. City attorney items.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
City manager items.
I have no items for you.
Ooh.
Again, well, yeah, I digress. Look, I do want to again thank Gas, Jack, and all the help that he's put in. The Gas Agreement tonight, tonight's a long night coming, I think. We've been at this two and a half years or so, lots of litigation. I know Jack and I have burned some oil on this one. And like I said, this is one of the most exciting things I think I've worked on. And I'm very hopeful that it will be profitable for the community. I think it's a great partnership with the villages. I can already hear Commissioner Christian over here on projects. And this is the benefit. This is really the benefit.
What's Dan gonna say?
This is really the benefit of, you know, one of the first things I said to you guys when you interviewed me was you have to operate your utility like a utility first. And the gas department, I think, is a great example of that. And that's not a derogatory remark to any of our other utilities, because they each pull their weight and help Leesburg prosper. But in particular, this is a neat agreement. There's a lot of room in there for you. And I can't thank Jack enough for all the help he did, and Fred and John. So today was an exciting day for me.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Christian?
I would say congratulations to Al for his foresight, and as he already acknowledged, Jack and another departments for keeping our city moving forward. You can't have gas without wastewater and water and other utilities. So I just want to commend our staff for just being a forethought-type city with visionary. So Al, I want to commend you on the job. Well done keeping our city. Whether I'm on this side or that side, I'll be coming telling you to build something in Leesburg.
Commissioner Peterson?
Nothing tonight.
Commissioner Robach?
Congratulations as well. I knew it was a big deal. And I think this is one of the... I always says, you know, you can't run the government like a business. But I think on the utility side, we're fortunate that he does run it like a business, because then we get deals like this that enable us to, despite my protestations, sometimes run the rest of it not like a business. So I was thinking, though, man, we cannot borrow the money. We could reduce the electric transfer to 6%, all the gas money. But no, this is great.
You could do that.
But no, that is... I know it's been a long time coming and a lot of work. And I don't think many cities would have been as aggressive about fighting it, especially knowing that there were going to be the big legal bills and the uncertainty. But so kudos to staff on that. I would like to thank Public Works for taking the lead and getting the new stop signs in. Those are great. Ninth and Meadow, two different ones. Meadow and Third.
Magnolia.
Magnolia, okay, Third.
Ninth and Magnolia.
Ninth and Magnolia.
This one.
That's it. Okay. So thank you for getting that done. And then also, remind everyone that Mardi Gras is coming up. So Friday night is the crowning ball, and Saturday is the party in the streets. And as always, I'm sure it'll be a great event. So come out and enjoy that.
Mayor Dennison?
May I have one more kudo? Just for if you give me a best of all. I want to thank Al in DC. Habitat donated a lot for us right beside Berry Park. Many, you know, if you go on Berry Park, it's not much park. When they have the big Juneteenth and other events, it's not park. And Habitat donated a lot for us. Al and the staff cleaned the lot. It looks wonderful. I think it expanded Berry Park for probably 40, 50 parking spots, not paved. So I just want to thank Al and the staff and Habitat for being just a great partner. I think I called Ken. It was a four-minute conversation. He donated a lot to the city. So just to again, one of the great partnerships that we have in our city. So I want to thank our staff for just moving on that without costing us anything except cleanup.
Mayor Dennison?
Just a reminder of what Commissioner Robach mentioned, the parade and everything that's happening Saturday. I'll be a judge at that parade. I love that parade. So come on down, and I'll probe you. And the other thing, Al, you know, it was a long struggle, and we really took the chance on this one. And it looks like it's paying off. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Absolutely. The German?
Got your German.
Thank you.